Voting can be learned from the Planning Commission at 208-5895. If some issues arise in the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, the chairman has the discretion to either allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commission members may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. A recusal does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant. Depending upon circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there is only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary will vote in their stead unless both supernumeraries are already voting due to absence. The Planning Commission makes final decisions subject to appeal on subdivisions, planning approvals, and plan unit developments. The Planning Commission only makes recommendations on zoning applications with the city council making the final decision. At this time, I'd ask you to please silence or turn off your cellphone. I'd remind commissioners and staff members to use their microphones when addressing the commission. At this time, we'll call the roll. Mr. Gant, Mr. Valas.
Here.
Mr. Doyle.
Here.
Ms. Sessions.
Here.
Mr. Amberger.
Here.
Mr. Daves.
Here.
Mr. Hembry.
Here.
Ms. Latham.
Here.
Ms. Denson.
Mr. Cameron.
Here.
Due to absence, Mr. Cameron is a supernumerary. We're voting on all applications today. We will begin with item number one. It's a holdover of a zoning application for Johnny's RV Park subdivision. This is 6021, 6049, 6075 Middle Road, 468 through, and 46, 5684 and 5688 US Highway 90.
Mr. Watkins skipped one.
Yes, sir.
You skipped an application.
Yeah.
Oh, you have an A.
I think I'm doing on mine.
Okay. Yep. Got you. All right. Hang on. Let's go back and start with item A on the agenda. 1710 Dolphin Island Parkway. This is a subdivision application. Hankinson subdivision. Applicant present?
Yes, I'm Darrell Russell with McCroy &amp; Williams, 3207 International Drive. The applicant wishes to withdraw both applications at this time.
All right. If you're in the audience to talk about item A on the agenda, 1710 Dolphin Island Parkway, subdivision application, the rezoning has been withdrawn. All right. Now, we'll go to item number one on the agenda. Holdover for Johnny's RV Park subdivision, again, 6021, 6049, 6075 Middle Roads. Applicant present?
Yes. Brett Orrell with Poly Surveying. I just wanted to request a holdover. I believe it was recommended for denial for deficient information. There's some multiple things going on on this property, but we'll look to get that addressed prior to the next commission meeting.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Olson, do we have a date on that?
Two weeks, okay.
I'd rather have four. I need some more time.
Nineteenth.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, if you're here on item number one of the agenda, which is the PUD application for Johnny's RV Park subdivision, the applicant has been, has requested a four-week holdover. In all likelihood, the commission will grant that request, but if you're here today to speak for or against this application, you're certainly welcome to come down, but the public hearing on this agenda item will be most likely May 19th. Okay. We'll move to item number two on the agenda. This is a holdover for the zoning application for Pine Brook Investments. This is 3950 Etale through, on Airport Boulevard, and 271 through 283 McGregor Avenue South. Staff has recommended a holdover of this application to May 5th. Again, if you're here today to speak, you're welcome to come down, but the application will be heard in public hearing on May 5th. All right. We'll move to item number three on the agenda. This is a subdivision application for 1753 Spring Hill Avenue. Applicant present? Anyone here needing information?
I'm sorry. I'm recusing on this one, but I thought it was held over anyway.
Anyone here needing information on item number three, or here to speak in opposition to subdivision application for 1753 Spring Hill Avenue? All right. We'll move to item number four under extensions. This is Collect and Place subdivision, phase two through four. Recommended for approval on the extension. Applicants in agreement with the staff recommendation. Anyone needing information on the extension application, item number four on the agenda for Collect and Place subdivision? Or anyone here in opposition? All right. We'll move to new subdivision applications. This is item number five. This is 6925 Cottage Hill Road. Applicants indicating he's in agreement with all of the staff recommendations and conditions. Anyone here needing information on item number five, or here in opposition? We'll move to item number six under new subdivision applications. This is 220 Lambert Avenue, Maus subdivision, USA addition. Applicants present indicated he's in agreement with all staff recommendations and conditions. Anyone needing information on item number six, or here in opposition? We'll move to item number seven. This is a subdivision application on 6350 Old Pascagoula Road. This is recommended for a holdover to 519. Applicant present?
Yes. Brett Orrell with Poly Surveying. I would like to see if we could potentially move this along. This is a, the church owns this property. They have entered into a sale for the lot one. There's a house existing there, trying to generate some revenue for the church. Their hope is to do some community things. Ball field maybe on lot two. They own the lot adjacent to this where the church is located. There is a flag-shaped lot located directly west, adjacent to us. This lot in particular is already irregular in nature, pretty consistent with the surrounding properties. And I'm here today asking the commission to consider approval today. And I don't know if the staff may have conditions, but they do.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Orrell. Questions by commissioners?
That's right. Okay.
Mr. Olson?
Yes, sir. We, I'm sorry. We do have conditions prepared if the commission would like to hear them.
If you'd hand one up to Mr. Orrell.
I'm in agreement.
All right. Mr. Orrell, the applicant indicated his agreement to the proposed staff recommendations and conditions. Should the commission wish to take this up today? Is there anyone else here needing to speak on item number seven? Needing information on item number seven, or here in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to ask Mr. Orrell a question. Mr. Orrell, is the church considered potentially incorporating lot, proposed lot two into the church property since it's adjacent?
Yes. I actually had a conversation. There's multiple parties involved in that, and originally, I tried to persuade them to combine them at this time. For some reason, I don't know, for financing issues or something, they did not do that. However, I spoke to one of the ladies involved today, and she did address that they do want to combine those at some point in the future. So, I'd imagine you probably see this maybe in the next couple of months coming back before you, now that they've got some money being freed up.
So, let me ask you, no additional subdivision. Condition two, would that restrict ability to subdivide by increasing?
No, sir, because it says until additional frontage on a paved public road is provided.
Okay.
So, incorporating it into the church lot would provide that additional frontage.
Okay.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Orrell. We'll take it up into deliberation. Again, anyone here needing information on item number seven? All right. We will move to new plan unit development applications. This is item number eight. This is 3150 Dolphin Street, a zoning application for McConnell Automotive. Applicants present indicated he's in agreement with all staff recommendations and conditions. Anyone here needing information on agenda item number eight, or here in opposition? Any questions by commission members? All right. We'll move to item number nine. This is 1867 Pritchard Avenue West, 10110 Joel Court, zoning application, PUD. Applicants present?
Jean Stacy, Driven Engineering, representing the applicant. The applicant's in agreement with the planning commissions' conditions and recommendations.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, or any questions by commission members? Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I come before the commission, not necessarily in opposition.
Can you pull the mic down just a bit, please?
I come before the commission, not necessarily in opposition, but as we look at the plans and things that have happened previously with this property, the rules and regulations were not completely followed, so we're asking at this time that if it is approved, that the rules and regulations would be followed, because even with the demolition of the property, they were not followed.
Yes, ma'am. And can you give us, can you give us your name for the record, please?
My name is Gwendolyn Smith, and I reside at 2613 St. Stevens Road, Mobile 36617. My property is adjacent to this property.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We appreciate you coming down. Anyone else speaking in opposition or in support of this application? Yes, sir. Please come down. And commission members, I'd also point out that you've got two letters at your podium with respect to this application. One or two.
My name is Apostle Joe Barnaby. I'm the pastor of the New Ship of Zion Church. We took on this project. It was a rundown area in the community. There were houses that had been burnt down. It was downright, and there were some problems that possible asbestos. And we took on the project. We demolished the properties. We went through the chain of procedures to make it a one light, did a one-light survey, and we're preparing to start building to better this community so it wouldn't be an eyesore. So, we followed the rules and regulations to our best ability that we know of. We haven't been sanctioned or fined by anybody. We do have current permits for demolition, and we have a team that's in place. So, once we obtain the approval, as we follow the rules and the requirements that the commission has set before us before, as we get that approval, if it's granted, we'll do so, and we'll continue at that time.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Pastor. I might recommend you touch base with your neighbors and just let them know that y'all are on top of this, and will be good neighbors to them as well. Anyone else needing to speak with respect to this application? Any questions by commissioners?
I would like to ask, on one of these letters, there are a number of questions, specific questions that are asked. I know you have, probably have a copy of this letter. I just want to make sure that those specific questions are addressed with this particular neighbor.
I don't know that we need to have those addressed today, but just with the neighbors? Are you asking?
Well, really, with the people that are raising the questions to me, just to be a good steward.
Yes, ma'am. Hi. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir. We will move to group applications. This will be item number 10, 804 Dr. Martin Luther King Avenue. This is a subdivision application, planning approval and rezoning. Applicant present? Applicants present indicating he's in agreement with the staff recommendations and conditions. Anyone here needing to speak in opposition to this application, or who has questions concerning item number 10, the subdivision, planning approval and rezoning of 804 Dr. Martin Luther King Avenue? We'll move to item number 11. This is 111 Short Texas Street, subdivision application and rezoning for Gulf City South subdivision. I'd point out to the commission members that there is materials at your podium with respect to this agenda item. Mr. Byrd.
Jerry Byrd. Byrd Surveying Company for the applicant. Subdivision is recommended for approval, and we, applicant agrees to the conditions. On the rezoning, yes, recommended for denial with three reasons. Start with reason number two. No justification was given. That's the letter I laid out. This is the attachment that I had submitted with the application, which didn't say it was number three on the application, the listing, the reasons, but the wording is the same, and the second sheet is the zoning ordinance itself, which lists that. The, as I will repeat, but probably again in here, there's, this property's been for sale for four years, not for sale, excuse me, for lease for four years, indicating a shortage of I-1 uses. And it started out, well, we'll get to that, too. Item, reason number three, the Mount Phamobile waterfront area. That's a little small map that's included in it. I don't know where there's one large enough that you can really read, but staff says it's in the waterfront area as per the map of Phamobile. Map also says that revisions and updates will occur, so they know that this is not the final form. Apparently, from what I can see on it, our south property line really is the south line of the waterfront area as shown on that map, so we're just barely into that. I don't know why they ever included all of the area between the interstate and the water, in the waterfront area. The book talks about on the waterfront area, one is waterfront access, protecting the shorelines, protecting the wetlands. In this area, which we're talking about from the cruise terminal on down, actually, along in this area, it's all bulkheaded. The waterfront's all bulkheaded. It's deep enough to pull a 600-foot ship up against the side of. There is no wetlands. There is no shoreline. It's been, well, that's the old bender shipyard, and everything else in here is I-2 that'll back it up. The map for Mobile also states that creating walkways, visual, well, the jail is there. That'll make a nice thing to walk by. Industry, like I say, industry has been located there, located there for many years, and in the area from Virginia Street to Canal Street, from the interstate to the water, according to tax assessors' records, there's like $47.6 million worth of real estate in there. I doubt seriously if any of those are going to donate it, and I don't think the city of Mobile has money to purchase it. The cruise terminal, like I say, is right up in here. The public can't access the water at that point. It's all blocked off. So, I mean, it's included in this waterfront access. I don't know. If you want to walk along by the cruise terminal, you can do it out by the curb lane. When the new bridge gets built, if it ever gets built across the river, the state might will allow waterfront access under the bridge. They can condemn that property. I know I'm running short on time, but I think I'm the only one speaking. They have allowed access in other areas under the bridges to gain it. They can condemn the waterfront and gain access to it. Then, going back to reason number one, we had originally submitted this for Steel Service Center, where they manufactured I-beams for all sizes, lengths, shapes. Staff lists that as a fabrication shop, and it goes in, fabrication goes in I-1, manufacturing goes in I-2. I had submitted another application for Steel Service Center, north part of the city. This was in, it was, appeared on the agenda November the 20th, 2014. It was recommended for approval. Same, same situation. Same business, same classification. It was recommended for approval. This one is not. This application, we started off in January, submitted it on January 28th, February 1st deadline, 11 weeks ago. It was held over for either do a subdivision application or deeds. Well, I thought the deeds covered it. I submitted deeds. That wasn't good enough. We held it over to do the subdivision application, which we did.
Mr. Byrd, can I stop you one second?
Sure.
Is there anybody else here who's speaking in support of this application? All right. I'll give you a little latitude to go over on your time, but just.
Okay. I'm not far from it.
Okay.
Another reason for this stretching out was the meeting a few, two or three meetings ago, where there's no quorum. Nothing was heard. If you're kind enough to approve this today, it's still going to be seven to eight weeks before the city council will finalize the rezoning. That would be a total of 18 weeks, four and a half months. A business really doesn't want to wait that long to get into a property. The owner hasn't had any action as far as the I-1 and I-2 use was. He would like to continue on and rezone this into I-2 so that he would be ready to lease This is, this is the subject site, I-10 Mobile River. All of the blue in here is I-1. All of this light gray is I-2. I don't think that rezoning this into an I-2 classification will, will be a detriment to this area, and your consideration would be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. Questions by commission members? Anyone else needing information on agenda item number 11, or having questions concerning this item, or here in opposition? Mr. Olson?
Excuse me.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Ms. Latham?
Mr. Byrd, could you pass that colored map for us to look at that you just held up and referred to?
Is there actually a proposed Steel Service Center for it? Or is that just?
No, they, they left. They found another place.
Okay. So, they're gone.
So, right now, yeah.
So, there's no tenant in waiting?
Sir.
There's no tenant in waiting? There's nobody going in the building, trying to lease the building?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Started out that way, but they, they left because the rezoning was taking too long.
Mr. Olson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. To address a couple of the issues that Mr. Byrd brought up, first being the map for Mobile, as the commission knows, that is a comprehensive plan. It is intended to guide development, show areas for what their future intended use could be, should be. It does not get down to the, necessarily always the lot level. I think, though, in this case, it does. We do have a larger map upstairs, which is why the staff was able to determine which use it was classified in under the map for Mobile. But to say that the map for Mobile really, and I'm paraphrasing here, taking a lot of license, doesn't really apply here, it does. In a case like this, for rezoning, rezoning a property within a specified district under the plan to a heavier classification, it is not really supporting the plan, and that is what the staff's intent was when we included that as one of the reasons for denial, is supporting of the plan. With regard to the specific use that was mentioned, I'll be honest, I don't have a scope of operations. I'm not sure. I don't see one that was submitted along with the application. I'm not sure, to be frank, how that determination was made here and on the one in 2014, I think you said. I don't know how the determination was made then, what zoning classification, whether it would require I-1 or I-2. But under staff purview, if you look at the map that Mr. Byrd presented, the zoning map that we have up on the screen, which is a smaller area, the entire block that this site is in, half the block to the north, the entire blocks to the south and to the west are I-1. This would be somewhat of an intrusion into that I-1 area. So, those are the types of things that we looked at and used as a basis for our recommendation for denial. We stand by that recommendation, but we do have conditions prepared should the commission choose to consider the rezoning, and.
Let's go ahead and let Mr. Byrd have a copy of those, and we can take, I certainly want to give him an opportunity to respond. We'll take up the issue in deliberation.
Richard, just so I'm clear, on the zoning map that we have, where it says, a lot of the I-1 property shows vacant land, is that vacant as in not being used, or that's just?
Yes, sir.
So, it seemed like a lot of the I-1 properties?
There are also I-2 properties that are.
Okay. Yeah, it doesn't expand out that far.
Right. You've got to expand out to see some of the I-2 properties that are vacant, but there's vacant properties all along the area.
Mr. Byrd, do you have anything to respond?
Well, of course, I would add, the block to the north, yes, half is I-1, but half is I-2. And the block to the south is I-1. Skip that block, and then you hit I-2 going on south, two or three blocks, I-2 across the street. So, it's really not a harsh intrusion into the I-1 because of the I-2 immediately to the north.
Thank you, sir. Questions?
I would be okay with these.
Questions by commission members? All right. Thank you, Mr. Byrd. With that, we will go to deliberation session. Begin with item Agenda A, and this is DIP I-10 LLC subdivision application and rezoning application. This has been withdrawn. Item one on the agenda. Applicants requested a holdover to May 19th. I'll make that motion. Second by Ms. Latham. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move to item number two. This is Pine Brook Investments LLC, recommended to holdover to May 5th. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valas. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to item number three, subdivision application for 1753 Spring Hill Avenue. Mr. Valas is recused.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hembry. Second by Ms. Sessions. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move to extensions. This is item number four, Collect and Place subdivision, recommended for a. Motion carries. Move to extensions, this is item number four, collect and place subdivision, recommended for a one-year extension, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Doyle. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Take item number five under new subdivision applications, this is 6925 Cottage Hill Road.
Move to approve based on staff recommendation?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sessions, second by Mr. Hembry, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go to item number six, this is Maus Subdivision USA Edition, 20, 220 Lambert Avenue.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dave, second by Ms. Sessions, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to item number seven under subdivision applications, this is 6350 Old Passage to Gula Road.
Move for approval subject to staff recommendations that were handed out?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Valas, second by Mr. Hembry, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to new plan unit development applications, this is item number eight, 3150 Dolphin Street, McConnell Automotive.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hembry, second by Ms. Latham, Ms. Sessions, I'm sorry, by Ms. Sessions, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to item number nine, this is 1867 Pritchard Avenue, pastor Joe Bonner Bay, PUD.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dave, second by Mr. Valas, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go to item number 10 under group applications, this is 804 Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Avenue. I believe we can take the subdivision, P, planning approval and the rezoning at once.
I move we approve after staff recommendations?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Latham, second by Mr. Hembry, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move to item number 11, this is 111 Short Texas Street, this is a subdivision application and a rezoning. We'll take the subdivision first.
Move to approve the subdivision based on staff, staff recommendations?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hembry, second by Mr. Amberger, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The subdivision application carries, is approved. The, go to the item B, which is the rezoning on 111 Short Texas Street.
I make a motion to approve based on staff recommendations that were handed out?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Cameron to approve the rezoning, second by Mr. Valas, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Let's, let me just go make sure we've got Mr. Doyle, Ms. Latham, and Ms. Sessions opposed, everyone else is in favor. Motion carries. All right, we will move to other business, and we have got the, the vote on the resolution to support the Africatown neighborhood. Understand the public hearing was held at the last planning commission meeting. I think at this point, we'll take questions and then call for the vote. I'm going to be recused from this portion of the meeting, we don't have a co-chair or a secretary, so. Mr. Dave, would you mind taking the mic and handling this aspect of the meeting, and then I think we will be done.
Yes, sir, thank you.
If I may, for those of y'all who were not here last time, Nigel had presented this applicant with this plan with the consultant. We asked that it be held over so y'all could have time, because y'all had not read it. A lot of y'all had not read it or received it, so that's the reason we didn't vote last time. Nigel's here to answer any of y'all's questions, or y'all can discuss what was presented last time.
Any questions by any commission members? Hearing none, is our, is our, is the procedure of Mr. Anderson to adopt this resolution that has been placed in front of us?
Correct.
Okay, the chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
Move that we adopt the resolution for the city planning division to support the Africatown, Africatown neighborhood plan.
Second.
Okay, we had, had a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, thank you. Turn the chair back over to Mr. Watkins.
Thank you, Mr. Dave. Ms. Olson, is there any other business?
Yes, sir, I believe Ms. Becco would like to introduce somebody to you.
Thank you, as many of you are aware, when we initiated the map Phamobile process, it was important for us to organize and develop a plan that was implementable, not a plan that would sit on the shelf. So in doing so, it was important for us to take a look, from a personnel perspective, what we needed to do to provide support for that effort. So within the last fiscal year budget, there was a real, realignment that took place departmentally, but the long-range planning division was reinstituted back into the city planning function. And so today, I'd like to introduce to you our newest deputy director of long-range planning, Mr. Brian Underwood.
Thank you, Shayla. Brian, we're glad to have you on the team, look forward to working with you. And I'm sure a lot of us would appreciate any insights you've got in how we're supposed to be applying the new map Phamobile to some of the applications that we have brought before us. So we look forward to having you at our meetings, and when necessary, working with us, and glad you're on the team.
Thank you, sir, I'm glad to be here, looking forward to getting started and, and work hard to try to get the job done for supporting map Phamobile.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Olson, anything further?
The only other thing, I think, is just to touch on, everybody received an email from me about receiving calls or contact from people on the Midtown Movement, or even other people that are interested in that application. That application will be on your May 5th agenda, so that, that could be an interesting meeting.
And I will make the commission aware that I will recuse on that item, as I'm an interested party. And Mr. Valas will as well, so. Ms. Sessions?
Yeah.
So it will be important that we do have turnout from other folks here in order to have a quorum. So I just, I wanted to make that clear.
I have a long, I told Mr. Watkins I have a longstanding commitment, I'll be out of town that entire week.
What is the date?
May 5th.
May 5th.
Six is a quorum?
Seven.
Six, seven, if anybody else. Six, seven, so that, those of y'all who are here who are going to recuse yourself, and then Carlos and Jennifer will have to be here.
Could we get that application a little early to have a chance to, more time to review it?
We can send the site plan to you, I have not done the staff report yet, that did fall on me, lucky me.
Watch out for the typos.
Ah, lucky me.
Ms. Becco could impress upon the administration the fact we've got two vacant seats, that would certainly help us move some of these quorum issues around, we've, we've had some issues here the last month or two, and so.
Right.
Anything we can do to help encourage the administration in that regard, or provide some recommendations, we're certainly happy to help.
Yes, please do, it has certainly been recognized that you are short a few members, and so we are working internally to identify new potential members, so any feedback and input that you have.
I'm sure he would be an excellent appointee. Anything else before the commission? All right, if nothing else, we stand adjourned, thank you all for being here.